All right, last call for yellow slips. All right, then I would like to call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I do that all the time, like, I don't know.
Get it together.
I know, it's been a day. All right, roll call, please, Linda.
Kristin Cambenzi.
Here.
Glenn Sarka. James Hewitt. Jennifer Clip.
Here.
Jennifer Ray.
Here.
Cheryl Maddox Smith.
Here.
Jason Zidunick.
Here.
All right, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Support.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Clip, support by Mrs. Maddox Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, comments from the public, it looks like they're all for non-agenda items. So we will move on to our business, which is the rebranding. So just as a refresher, we had around 2,000 submissions on the Survey Monkey, and that didn't include any mailed-in submissions, emails, phone calls, that were also received. So we were trying to narrow down the amount so that we could hopefully have a more workable number. So we took out all of the duplicates and had, I think, still right around 400 submissions. And so then we did, the board did, we kind of ranked the names, just to kind of see where some of them would fall, and it was one more likely to be picked, two somewhat likely, three was not likely, and then four was removed. So I believe that we had 20 names that at least five of us decided, or put down as four, so we would remove another 20 names. So then, Mrs. Hopper, what was the amount that we had got down to?
Approximately. Approximately 374 names.
374 names. I believe that we had talked about possibly passing this on to the advisories. And I did have a meeting yesterday with the high school principal and Mr. Sedgwick and two student reps, and we kind of discussed how that might look. So there's 44 advisories, if we still have 350 names, it would be about eight names per advisory that they would kind of look at, and weed down to hopefully one per advisory. And then there was some discussion if we wanted them to have, the students, to have like another round of voting, or just discussion, to maybe bring it down lower than 44. So, so it's kind of open, that's just a recap of what's been going on. So if we have, if you guys want to talk about, or offer suggestions, or...
Krista, are we going to add the, I think you said in that list is not the ones that were mailed in, so that number...
They were.
Oh, that, so that is in there?
Yeah, they were, most of the ones that were mailed in, they kind of did like multiple submissions, so they, if it was, most of the ones that we got, I think almost all the ones we got by email or snail mail were already on the list that was generated online.
Awesome.
Yep.
Awesome.
Yep, so all the, all the names are accounted for that, that were given to the board.
Good, thank you.
From where I'm standing, and knowing, you know, high school kids, and consensus, and buy-in, and best practice for reaching consensus, I love the idea of having those 44 advisories reach consensus. I know that we had discussed, you know, some of the concerns with a poll, only because it can be so contentious, and then it moves into popularity, and we've said so often, the last thing we want to do is have this end up down the road with our final decision, you know, being based way back at this stage, and then having somehow that come out, that this was voted upon by a certain advisory with a certain group of kids, and the kids get targeted. The way I think we're all on the, kind of the same page, the last thing we want to do is have the kids take onus and responsibility for this, you know, based on how things have gone. So I do think the idea of having consensus, and I like the idea, from where I'm standing, of arriving at 44 based on advisories, taking a look at those 44, I'm wondering if, instead of taking them from 44 to whatever number the board is going to look at, I get very nervous, and I think we, I think we agree on this, maybe I'm wrong, that us discussing 44 names, it seems very, very random, and we talked about doing a bracket system and a whole bunch of other stuff, but we do want, you know, we're here to serve kids, and we do want their input, without again putting, putting the onus on it, but we have to have a manageable amount. I'm wondering if, once those 44 are chosen, if we can punt to student government, where they're out discussing those, and maybe they don't, maybe student government doesn't, or isn't able to whittle it down for 10 or 15, or whatever we decide, but they're able to give us feedback, so that we've got documentation of that feedback to consider in that final process.
Yeah, that was mentioned when we did talk with, to the student government yesterday. They said that they'd be willing to, you know, go through the 44 names, and just, you know, what do you like, what do you don't like, so even if we just had that to kind of base our discussion on, that that would be helpful.
And if I'm understanding correctly, there was even a point where they were interested in voting themselves, and we decided that probably that was at best practice, or in best interest for them?
Yes, when I spoke with the students yesterday, they, they did express some interest in coming up with the final name, but I told them that the board in general was hesitant to do that, because we didn't want any blowback, or anything to come back on the students, and that, you know, since this has been a board decision to begin with, that it would be most appropriate for it to continue to stay with us, just in case there was some issues down the road.
And do I understand the students themselves, in the conversation you had yesterday, were fairly enthusiastic about the process?
Yes, they were, they were definitely enthusiastic about the process. They're, they're looking forward to, you know, getting on the announcements, and, and kind of, I don't want to say selling it, but talking to their other classmates, and trying to come up with, you know, a few names that, that could potentially be their new nickname.
Yeah, just to weigh in, I think that's, pretty much sums up everything that we've been discussing lately, and I guess the only thing that maybe new, I think that has just been spoken about, might, from last meeting to this one, might be the, bringing the 44 back to the students again. You know, I guess I'd like to have something a little bit more concrete, for sure, before we just kind of hand it off, you know, to them, so I don't know if we want to have that kind of hammered out tonight, or if we just kind of wait and see what the 44 names come back and look like first, and then kind of make that decision. But again, the only hesitation there is just, yeah, it's going to be a fine line to walk, where we're encouraging their participation, but also not putting them in the, the potential, you know, circumstance of being, you know, pulled in one direction or the other, and, you know, feeling like they're pressured into, you know, giving us suggestions, so yeah, I'm kind of struggling with exactly how that should look, but ultimately sounds like, yeah, just like everything we've been discussing so far.
Yeah, and that, and that was one thing that was brought up, too. I mean, none of the students in the high school currently were here back in 2019, when this was brought up, and things were a little bit contentious in the high school, so they, they don't realize some of the stuff that, that was going on, and so I think that is a valid point, that, you know, we don't want some of the things that happened in the past to resurface now, when things have, for, all cases seems to be going fairly well.
And at some point, I don't think adding process is going to make it any more perfect. You know, I think at some point, we just have to say 44 names is enough, and we can, we could sort through them. I think this back and forth, back and forth, is, I understand why we're doing it, but at some point, we just need to sit down and make a decision, and take their input, and go with it.
I really do, though, I have, I gotta remain firm on this, I really would like to have them, 44 is a huge amount, it's, you know, it's a lot of numbers in the bingo wheel, if nothing else, if there's not clear recommendation, we have student government for a reason, and what our job as adults, not necessarily as a board, but as educators and adults, is to prepare our kids for this world out here. I have a lot of faith that they can have those, I actually have all the faith in the world, that they can have these conversations in a non-contentious way. I think we've been monitoring the temperature of the high school pretty clearly, and at different times, even this fall, with the larger events, and, and checking in with admin, checking in with the students that we know, and we're hearing that it's going pretty well. I, I still would love to have some form of feedback on those 44. It does not have to go down to a, you know, to necessarily a final 10, but, boy, it seems awfully random to me not to continue to solicit advice. We can do this without putting the onus on kids. We are all unified from the beginning, that kids, we're going to do whatever we can to keep them from being targeted. So maybe if they even were able to, at a student council level, you know, here's what, here's some pros, here's some cons, here's some pros, here's some cons, we're here to serve the current students in the high school. That, that's, you know, there's three, or I guess four things that we've sworn to oath when we were elected, and one of them are these kids, so I want to make sure that we're doing right by, these are current students, these children, and I trust that they can do this.
I don't think it's a lack of trust in the kids, I think it's a lack of trust in adults in our community, I hate to say it, and that's where I think some of this is coming from. As an academic exercise, as an exercise in civics, I think that's where adding process would be great, and I would love to, if this was less contentious, follow it, and follow best practices. Unfortunately, I think I'm concerned about those kids, and the statements they make in the meeting, and the decisions they make coming back to haunt them, because we've all seen how people have responded to us, and I don't want to visit that on the kids. I think there's a way to do it, they can, they could get a sense of how it's done, and provide some input, but at some point, we just need to shoulder it, and it's unfortunate. I would, in a different environment, I think that would be perfect. I think what you're suggesting is, is great, I just, I worry about the adults in our community. The kids, I, they'll be fine.
To add to that, I think, from my individual perspective, I'm thinking of it coming from the angle where, after a name is chosen, a nickname is chosen, you know, from here, a year from now, five years from now, when asked about it, I don't want to have to say, or have the ability, not that I would, but to have the ability, or the assumption that we had a crutch and said, oh, well, you know, we only had this short list of names, because that's what the students gave us, you know, again, not saying that's, that's how it would necessarily play out, but I don't want to have that as an excuse that others could use.
I'm just kind of, you know, obviously processing, and I think everything that's been said here is of great value. I do feel that at some point, yes, 44 is a lot of names, but at some point, you know, we, we get their input, and then we take it back and narrow it down, you know, we know none of this, that, we, I wish this process could be fun and exciting, and I think it is for the kids, and that is, gives me hope, you know, and, but I just, I feel like at some point, it could become a burden on them, and as much as they are capable of shouldering that, I don't think it's their responsibility to have to shoulder that, so...
Mrs. Maddox Smith, anything?
I guess I'm processing it as well. I, I don't think that it would be putting too much of a burden to have student council look at that last 44, and even just give us some input, as far as pros and cons, without necessarily making a decision, but maybe just giving us a little bit of direction of what they think. I don't think that's a bad thing, and I don't, you know, again, I agree with Mr. Sarka, you know, we, I'm not worried about the kids, it's, it's more the, the adults in the, in the community, you know, that have, I don't want this to come back on the kids in any negative way, but getting a little bit of direction from the kids, from the student government, I don't think that's a bad thing, not putting the onus on them at all. Definitely the board would, you know, be responsible for the decision, but, you know, getting some direction from the student government, I, I think that's a valid and good idea, but again, the final decision needs to rest with the board.
Mr. Zidunick?
As far as the ranking of the names that were sent, where, where did that go? Who got the list of, of that? Compiled that?
Mrs. Hopper has it, and then I think we all, we all have access to the results.
Okay.
If you, if you filled out the, the form, you should have access. I haven't seen it yet, because I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out, but I think...
Fortunately, I haven't been able to print it yet, but as soon as it's all complete, I will find a way to send all the results to all of you, of this, of that meeting.
Yeah, so I think that there were, five out of the seven were able to fill it out. I mean, it was a short window to be able to fill it out, but five of the seven of us filled it out, so you could at least see that, that there were some that had, you know, clear top numbers, or whatever, and then it was pretty clear that there was 20 names that were definitely bottom of the barrel, that should be taken off.
Okay, so essentially, are we looking to move forward the top X amount of names off of that survey that was submitted to the board members, in order to gauge our input, move those forward? In order to look at input from the students, are we still looking at trying to get an anonymous email, or survey response, as far as getting information in, in return? Do we have, has there been a discussion about the mechanism to be able to do that? Do we know?
When, when I, we spoke with the students yesterday, we did kind of discuss that, whether they'd want to do like a lesson on building consensus, and like, actually like having discussion about the names, and like working together to come up with a top name, for their advisory, or to do more of an anonymous poll, and the students thought that it'd probably be better to, to have discussion prior to voting, but then have it be a more private vote on like the Chromebooks, or something like that.
Okay. Are we able, I, I think it would be a good idea to have the discussion when we sent out, to have some instructions passed on to whatever mechanism is going to be the delivery for the conversation, for example. Again, I think it's important, where it was sent out, when the four to three vote happened, to separate from our school name, where we had some information that I think is a great idea, as far as moving forward, the ideal nickname would pay tribute to the unique history of our school district community, and so whether it's that instruction, if anybody else would like to add something in addition to that, but I think surrounding the new school name around that goal, you know, would be, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, and I think it was discussed that there would be like a script, more or less, for each advisory, where it would have like the key points, and, and the criteria for the new nickname, as you mentioned, so that every, every advisory would be on the same page as to, as to how it was being delivered, and that was something that the students suggested, too, that the, the message should be delivered the same throughout the 44 advisories.
So if I understand Mr. Zidunick's question, part of that script, then, as laid out, should be that it is unique to our area, unique to our traditions, and what was the, do you have that in front of you, Mr. Zidunick? What was the actual word phrase there, unique to our area?
I do, and it says the, and I think this would be a good statement to have, to send to the kids, again, to have, the ideal nickname would pay tribute to the unique history of our school district community, and I, I don't know of a much better way to summarize that, and I think a few of the names that we had sent have that included in that, so I think that would, you know, would be, would be beneficial in the process.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I, and I do think, like, like when we originally did like the Survey Monkey, and we had like the three criteria, the, the second one, I don't think is relevant anymore, because I think that we already weeded out the, the names that just, that would have been derogatory, and, and, and gender specific, so I think that, that those are pretty much already weeded out, so... So I don't, I don't know if we need, if we should do like a formal vote on, on this process, or just a general directive, or...
Can I ask one?
Sure.
Other kind of follow-up question, just about the process itself? Because this time of year is Christmas, and I'm telling you, teachers are having a hard time doing any real meaningful content right now, would it be safe to say that we would like to at least have that process of the advisory buttoned up by December 20th, which is a week from tomorrow?
Yes, we would have the, they thought, the students thought that we would be able to get this down to the 44 by, before break, so then we, then we'd kind of leave it alone over break, and then we would not, as a board, bring it up again until our meeting in December. Oh, yeah, sorry, January, after our, after our organizational meeting, so... I don't think, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we need a formal vote, or just directive.
You could consider making a motion to direct administration to create 44 groups that are representative of the entire sample, or the entire, you know, list of names, and that way, unless you're going to try to create those groups today, you would then, we would have the green light to create those groups. I think we have a good system in place, once we get two more board, board members' input to create those sample sizes, or create those sample groups, those 44 different sample groups, that again, are a mix of likely, somewhat likely, not likely, et cetera, and then, also, if you wanted to make a motion to direct us to, to move forward with planning that advisory activity, I would imagine that'd be appropriate as well, and then we have the board's blessing to, to make that happen for, maybe not December 18th, unfortunately, but at least by break.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need it for the, the next board meeting, just, I think if the students could have it before break, I think that would be nice. So I guess I would entertain a motion?
And I would make the motion to direct the administration to set up the 44 groups, I guess, taking the results of our, the survey that we did, or the preferences that we did, and also to, I guess, plan the discussions around those choices, and the mechanism for, for getting that final 44 back to the board by December 20th.
What exactly is the motion? I guess I'd...
It would be to direct the administration to use the, the list that we provide, after all the board members have responded, to use that to, to send those results in a random way, I'm not sure what, what the, in a representative way to the 44 advisories, and to, I guess, implement a discussion with the students, and a vote from the students on their 44 suggestions, or one suggestion from each group.
By December 20th.
Did you guys get it, or are you still?
It was a bit of a lengthy motion, so...
Well, it's, yeah, it's kind of too...
The other, the other way to do it is direct the administration to follow the process that we've just discussed, and return to us with 44 suggestions from the advisories.
All support.
All right, motion made by Mr. Sarka, support by Mr. Hewitt. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Sorry, do we have, as far as the, this is going to be subsequent to the remainder of the board members completing the survey, correct?
Yes, so there's, there's two that did not, that did not have time to do it, so if they could do it at their earliest opportunity, and then, once that's completed, then we would have a better layout of where all the names fell, and how to put them into the, the different advisories.
It does look daunting, but when we, when you sit down to do it, and I did it twice, because I did it backwards, it ends up being about 25 minutes.
Well, I, I recommend doing it on your laptop, because on your phone, it doesn't, it kind of booted me off twice, so I had to do it three times, and really, all I did was the ones that were clearly not appropriate, and then the other ones, I just said, you know, that's, they're all to be discussed. I didn't really have any, and the like, yes, this one, it was more like, what, I don't know, there's four, four areas to do, and it's pretty straightforward.
So here's what I have for a motion. I make a motion to direct administration to create 44 groups, randomizing the results of the preference list provided, and direct administration to move forward with an advisory activity before break.
Much better than what Mr. Sarka said, yes.
That's exactly what he said, actually. The two remaining, throw it up, that was in there.
Yep.
Hence the lengthiness.
Yep, so we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
I would like to add, too, if we can have... I would like to add too, if we can have, again, that, when, when that's sent out by the administration to formulate the discussion around the ideal, you know, with, with the guidance that the ideal, ideal nickname would pay tribute to the unique history of our school district community.
It does sound like that's what the students asked for too, so there would have to be a, a short script and I don't, you know, I trust teachers, but maybe it would be important that the administration has that exact language, tribute to our, you know, unique, our district and our unique area and tradition, specific language.
Mr. Zadunik, if you send me that specific language, that exact language in an email, I will be sure to include that in the script.
I will, I will follow up with you. In addition, I think Mr. Hewitt had discussed previously about also considering not duplicating any of the current nicknames that are in our area. Mr. Hewitt, I don't know if you mentioned throughout the state of Michigan as well, but at least in our area, along with a couple of other things too. So did you add anything else?
Yeah, it was, again, just from my personal opinion, which I had sent out to the board in advance of this meeting, I just had a list of all the, every high school nickname in the state of Michigan. And, you know, I have kind of two preferences, whether or not this needs to be included. This was just my opinion, but one, I thought that it should also be a, a unique name. For example, I don't know if this is appropriate to do or not, but I guess I'm going to talk about it, but just because I don't want to all of a sudden eliminate potentially a name that people really love. But when I first heard the suggestion out of the many that were submitted, one that comes to mind is Cardinals. And I thought it was a good one when I first heard it. And when I was looking at all of the high schools in the state of Michigan that are nicknamed with the Cardinals, there's like more than 20, or it was very shocking to me that there's that many. And again, not that other people may feel this way, but I just feel that we should have something that's more unique than that. And furthermore, I certainly am of the opinion, as I mentioned last week, that I don't think we should have any nickname that is shared by any other school in the UP for sure. That, so those were two comments that I had.
I would say that, just a thought, instead of tasking administrators with looking at that list and trying to guide a conversation or putting limits on feedback of students, that seems like a perfect conversation to be having when we're taking that 44 down to our final decision. Because I personally, one board member, agree with you completely. It seems like to try to share that with class and try to put too many limitations on it and try to sort of educate the advisory teacher beforehand, it might be more than anyone asked for and might be more work for the advisors. But with the existing lists that we've gone through, I think we let that ride. And then when it's time to have those discussions about paring it down, there's a couple, I wasn't thinking of Cardinals necessarily, but there's a couple that I know are, you know, other people have suggested to me, and I did the same research and even in our, maybe not in the Upper Peninsula, but tip of the mitten up, it already exists. And I, I agree with you, especially as we have to travel downstate more for competition. We have to be aware, I think Jen Clip by herself thinks that we need to be aware of that.
And that's part of what I think narrowing it down, this survey that we, or this questionnaire that we just did. And that's kind of what I did. When I say something's not appropriate, I mean, there were a few that were obviously clearly not appropriate, but then there were some that were just, that I knew were either, you know, a university's name, which we don't need to really replicate or, and, you know, and for me, that's not really appropriate or necessary within this area in particular. So I think some of that will be eliminated in the process. And I think the students will help with that, but I do think ultimately, we can, if there are any remaining and we do our own research and say, whoa, wait a second, that's all over Michigan, let's, let's, that will help us as well, you know, in those, that final stretch.
So Mr. Cedric, I'll follow up with you on, on that language.
Any other comments? All right. Then is there, does anyone else have any other business that they would like to bring up? Mr. Cedric, anything?
No, I have, I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to comments from the public, general. Doug Garrison? John Thompson?
What do I do? Thank you, board, for being here today. I don't know about anybody but you guys, but it's been a pretty tumultuous week. And if there's nobody here, if there's anybody here that's not aware of why I'm here, I'd like to make that clear if, if there are questions. I guess that's the thing. If you have questions of what, I'm going to bring something up here. First, I'm here to get my job back. That's it. I have no dog in a red, I won't, she, there you go. I have no dog in whatever nickname we have. But I'm going to just let you know exactly what transpired, so I can see if you're an ally. And I don't even know who, I don't know how it transpired completely, so. I am the broadcaster, I'm the play-by-play broadcaster for Marquette. Let me back up. I'm born and raised, I'm an alumni, I graduated 1971. It's the first time I've been in this room in 51 years. It tells you what kind of a student I was. I have been involved with Marquette Sports from the get-go. I was the student manager for basketball for four years in high school with Louis Tacalini and Fred Tacalini. I began broadcasting on WDMJ for Marquette 27 years ago. And over the, and I've done 25 of the last 27 years. For two years, I was employed by Northern doing broadcasting for, for the Wildcats. This particular season, we understood this could be a problem. And the problem is my inability to, or this time thing is that, I hope this isn't going to be a big deal. I'm going to do the best I can, to be brief. I did the best I could, but I'm going to tell you, it wasn't good enough. And I accept that responsibility. I have had conversations with our athletic director and I've had conversations with the sports director at the radio station. Just so you know, I was an, I am an independent contractor. I don't even know if you folks know how this works. I get paid by the hockey team. And I'm not actually employed by the radio station. They are, in their graciousness, they've allowed me to use their equipment and they employ a board operator back at the studio so I could do the games. I have a broadcast partner, Joe Gaffney, who's been with me, I think, eight or nine years. Joe's not even paid. He does this as a volunteer. The point I'm trying to make is that, oh, we love Marquette Sports. I'm born and raised here in Marquette Sports. And I will now read my texts. And I'm getting short on time. Sorry, guys. We all have dinner. I have a hockey game to go to later. Oh, and I'm not very good at this part here, I'll tell you. During, on Friday night, December 1st, I was broadcasting a game from Saginaw. And at the end of the second period, by the way, I didn't see this till after the game, I received a text, John, this is Alex Tizio. Please continue to be cognizant, to refrain from referring to us as on the air. Things were much improved on the last broadcast, but it's a regular occurrence tonight. I enjoy listening to you and Joe. Please do not put me in a difficult position. On the subs, the next, on Sunday night, the third, I texted Alex. Alex, thank you for your text. I understand your position. I don't want you to have problems with my play-by-play. However, I cannot see my call improving to anything near what I believe will be acceptable by Marquette Senior High School or Media Brew, which is a radio station. I understand that our call is being monitored for Redman errors. I recall in our conversation, this goes back to conversations we've had earlier, I recall in our conversations saying that if these errors are untenable for listeners, for yourself or for program sponsors, that I can leave. I'll put the ball in your court, Alex. What is your desire? Thank you for your time. Okay, that was on a Sunday evening. I did not hear anything on Monday, and frankly, that matters not. Tuesday, a week ago today, at noon hour, I was called to come up to the radio station to meet with the sports director. I knew it was going to be more than a slap on the wrist. And I walked in and I was sent to the, to the office where the owner of the station is. And I, as soon as I walked in, the first thing I said is, do you want my equipment back? And he said, yes. And that was it. So I voluntarily turned this equipment in. He accepted that. Is that me? Oh. Can I keep going? Okay. And I try not to make this long. Then it comes up this last week. Guys, I have been in contact with, well, you know, I'm not going to, you may have seen. And so I subsequently sent Alex, I want my job back. So I sent Alex a text on Sunday night. Alex, quite a week. I'm starting with this contact to you. I'd like my job back. I think there's a chance, and this is the key, I think there's a chance that we can use this for healing. Our town is clearly, you wouldn't believe the comments that I've had. Bad, bad ones, really bad ones. And if anybody knows or has read my comments, they know where my faith is. And I believe that I'm being called through that faith to help with healing. And I think my position simply as a play-by-play guy, that's it, not taking a position on this issue, it's done. We'll come up with a new name. By the way, it's not easy. I did the math. In my career, I have called Marquette the nickname 250,000 times. 250,000 times. Also, I was a PA guy for Marquette for many, many years for basketball. I have a son that's a teacher here. He's a good teacher, really good teacher. I've got a great family. And I think together, the school board, and I don't know if you have any say in this, I don't know if you can become an ally or if you're not, and if this is the end, it's the end, don't worry about it. I've just had the best week of my life. Doug will tell you, he wrote something, I've lived my own funeral for the last seven days. You'll never have it better, folks. I'm so blessed and I thank you for your time. If there's anything that can be done that you can help me with this, great. And if not, that's okay too. I'll be happy to be a fan of Marquette. Thank you so much for your time.
Rob Sved, hopefully I said that. Good.
It's super hard to follow John. Heartfelt, I know what he's gone through and I know what all of you have been going through that have been on the board for the last four years. It has been tumultuous between the name, COVID, et cetera. Now, we, the reason why I'm here today is to discuss pool usage. The Wildcat Aquatics Club, formerly the Watercats from back in some of your days and also names before that, have been using the pool, paying rent to the school to use the pool since the early 80s. And it's come to our attention that that is going to end, at the end of the year, due to a custodian shortage. We're trying to reach out to the high school to see if there's anything we can do. We've offered to leave shoes at the door so we don't track in sand. We've offered to not use the locker rooms at all, so there would be no extra cleaning whatsoever. All we're trying to do is make sure that these kids can continue to swim, just like Wildcat hockey. It's an excellent feeder program for the high school team. We're trying to go through the list of UP champions right now. We're at between 80 and 90% of the names in the high school pool that were members of the Watercat program or Wildcat Aquatics Club, that feeder program. So without that feeder program, Marquette will probably not have any championships in swimming again. We've also discussed pool, expanding pool usage to other pools. There just aren't enough pools in the area anymore. This is the only one we have with NMU. Just hoping we can continue that. If we have to provide our own custodial services, we're more than willing to do that. Just wanted to get it on your radar. We'll probably be back at the next meeting with a few extra people if we don't get any movement on it now. Thanks for your time.
All right, moving on to board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Zadunik.
I appreciate the comments tonight, the public comments. In addition, I did have some productive conversations earlier in regards to our pay-to-play as well. So I'm hoping to have some additional movement on that, potentially at our next board meeting. And other than that, that's all I got.
Mrs. Maddox Smith?
Just want to thank the board for all the hard work that's being put into it, especially our president, Kristen. And thanks to the public that's coming to speak and bringing stuff to our attention. We hear you and we appreciate your time to be here.
Ms. Ray?
Just a reiteration of thanks for everyone being here and especially getting up and now speaking. It's never easy. And I think we've been doing a great job, kind of keeping this ball rolling and I appreciate the entire board doing it. But yes, Kristen, thank you for spearheading, keeping us on, on task here.
Mrs. Clip?
Echoing the gratitude both to the board, Superintendent Segwick, law enforcement, thank you so much. Tonight, thank you for everyone who spoke. We are listening and we do care deeply about the things you bring to us and why it might look like we're real calm ducks up here. I promise our feet underneath this table are paddling, paddling as fast as they can. So, and of course, yes, thank you to President Campbensey, who handles everything with grace.
Mr. Hewitt?
No further comments, thanks.
Mr. Sarka?
Fine taste and flannel also, I'll, I'll add that to the compliments tonight. Oftentimes, the, you know, the perfect, or at least the search for the perfect is the enemy of the good. And, you know, I just, not that expectations for some can be any lower for this board, but, you know, I don't want, well, I think we're, you know, we have to expect that there are going to be people that are disappointed. There's, you know, there's going to be names that we're not going to think about how they can be a little twisted and manipulated and made fun of. We're just not going to get it perfect and we, we have to accept that. And hopefully, as a community, we could all look around and say, there's a lot of things that we don't get perfect in our, in our lives. Really appreciate John coming in and Mr. Sved speaking as well. It's important to hear those things. I think oftentimes, when you see comments, you know, on social media especially, everybody assumes a bank of knowledge that, you know, maybe we don't have. You know, they've, they hear from friends and they hear, read posts and they just assume us, we as a board have, you know, perfect knowledge or all this knowledge about what happened and. And oftentimes, that's just not the case. And I really appreciate John, you know, the how he presented things today. And it's it's it says a lot about him that he was able to come forward and talk about it and make sure that the record is clear on that. So I really do appreciate that and I hope to have a conversation with him and thank him in person. Other than that, just, yeah, hold on tight.
All right, board president comments. I just want to thank the rest of my board for all of your hard work and and grace throughout this process and especially the last week. I just really appreciate it. I mean, we had our committee of the whole not that long ago and here we are again, you know. And it's like when I sent out the the survey for you guys to kind of go through the different names, I mean, you guys were able to get that back pretty quickly. And I think that it will help in the long run to have that piece of information, too. And I'm excited for the students to have a chance to have a say in in this process while still kind of making sure that that they're as safe as we can make them. I'm just I'm looking forward to see what 44 names that they end up coming up with and and looking forward to more discussion with the board. So I just want to thank you all very much. So announcements and other meetings, we'll be back here next Monday for a regularly scheduled board meeting here in the library at 5:30 on December 18th. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Mr. Hewitt, support by Ms. Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Sarka is opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.